Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, December 12, 2023 at 5:30 PM. We'll now have an invocation from Rabbi Mendel Super from the Chabad of Lake Havasu City. Rabbi, if you please make your way up front, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by the Wave Culinary School.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, esteemed members of this council. We gather this evening in prayer at a time when our prayers are especially needed. God created this world containing both good and evil and placed humanity in a struggle between the two. As it is written in the Torah, I have set before you today life and good and death and evil. We're each given freedom to choose between light and darkness, between good and evil, and we're enjoined, you shall choose life so that you and your offspring will live. We were entrusted with free choice and we were implored to choose wisely. In recent weeks, the world saw the face of evil. On October 7, we saw what happens when human beings choose evil, death, violence, and hatred. We felt and we still feel the tremendous pain of the families who are torn apart as innocent men, women, and children were brutally attacked, murdered, and kidnapped by their fellow humans, by people who had been consumed with an ideology of vicious hatred and death. We also saw so many choose goodness and life. We saw the face of unity and courage as strangers came together to help, to protect, and to show support. We saw all across the world and right here in our community in Lake Havasu City, people from all walks of life demonstrating their love, kindness, and support for the Jewish people during these trying times. As we celebrate the holiday of Hanukkah, lighting the sixth candle of the menorah tonight, those flames share a powerful and uplifting message. Although at times the world may seem full of darkness, we each have the ability to light a candle of hope and warmth to illuminate the darkness. Light is always victorious because in the presence of light, darkness has no place. When light shines, the darkness melts away. With this in mind, please join me as we direct our minds and hearts in prayer to the Almighty God and pray for a better today and a brighter tomorrow. Almighty God, we pray to you today for the protection and freedom of the people in Israel and especially the 137 that are being held hostage. May they each return home safely. Almighty God, we pray that you grant this council wisdom and clarity so they may faithfully lead our community and uphold your universal code of morality which you commanded Noah and his descendants after the flood. Almighty God, we pray for a time when the entire world will know only peace and when the world will be, in the words of the prophet Isaiah's, "hope and promise, a world will nation where nations shall not lift the sword against nation, neither shall they learn war anymore, because the earth will be full of the awareness of the Almighty as the waters cover the sea." Let us say, amen.
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, Thomas, and students from Wave Culinary School. If you'd tell us a little bit about your program.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm going to have them introduce themselves.
Hello, I'm Connor. I'm part of the culinary school. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Rae. I'm also part of the culinary school. I'm also, sorry. I'm Rae. I'm also part of the culinary school. I'm on my second year.
Hello, I'm Lily Wentz, and I'm a junior, and I'm a member of Wave Culinary.
These students come from our school, Wave. If you don't know where it is, it's next to Hokkaido. And we have a three-year program that is very successful. If you don't know, we have juniors, seniors, and sophomores can take the program. We've given over about $2.8 million in scholarships in 15 years. You may not be aware. We gave $250,000 out last year from C cap. And we have a thriving, thriving program that is in the state, one of the best programs in the state. We're deeply rooted in the community. We do about 800 hours a year of community service. You may have seen us last week at the mayor's holiday community dinner. We essentially had every student help make that dinner for you at the high school. And then we had you help you serve there. We'd open presents, did the trees, set up the whole place. So we love helping the community and we love giving out scholarships. So if you have anyone who's on the upcoming, maybe an eighth grader or a seventh grader, we're going to come find you in your freshman class and we're going to present Wave to you. And maybe it's a possibility that you can get a scholarship or just have some life skills. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. All right, we'll move on to item four, which is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmembers, Nancy Campbell.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Cameron Moses.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
Vice Mayor David Lane.
Here.
Mayor Kal Shehe.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is the consent agenda. Would any of the councilmembers like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Koch?
Motion.
Please.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Koch. We have a second from Vice Mayor Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote. Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item six on the agenda is the selection of Vice Mayor. So in Lake Havasu City, we have six elected councilmembers, one elected mayor. And then each year in our first meeting in December, the council then selects a person to serve as Vice Mayor, and that is what the process is that we'll be doing this evening. I would like to thank Vice Mayor David Lane for your service over the past year. It is a lot to have to step in and do things on behalf of the mayor, the mayor's office, and the city, and I appreciate your leadership over the last year. And I know you wanted to say a couple of words as well. So I'll turn it over to you, Vice Mayor Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been a big honor for me. This is the third time that I've been able to serve as the Vice Mayor here in Lake Havasu City, each one being a one-year term, the first one during your first term as mayor, and then this one on your second term. It's been quite the privilege working with you. But the one question that I get quite often is, what does the Vice Mayor do? You're all thinking the same thing, right? So the main duty of the Vice Mayor is to fill in for the mayor when he's unable to fulfill his duties. So God forbid anything should ever happen to our mayor catastrophically, but we have to be prepared. It would be irresponsible if we weren't. And so the Vice Mayor would step in for the mayor if something bad should happen and would take his seat until we have a new Vice Mayor. So therefore, on a day-to-day basis, the mayor and I, we talk quite often, and he makes sure that should something bad happen, that I would be able to step up and fill in. Other things that we do is during the city council meetings, if the mayor needs to be out of the area, or he can't make it, or he has to recuse himself, the Vice Mayor then takes over for him. If he has to recuse himself, the Vice Mayor will run those particular parts of the meeting. And also at the tri-city council meetings, if the mayor can't be there, then the Vice Mayor fills in there. And then there's many functions that the mayor attends. A lot of people like to see him. You probably see him all over the place. I hear that people see me all over the place, and I'm just filling in. So when he can't be at two places at the same time, then I would step in as the Vice Mayor and represent the mayor's office. And as councilmembers, we're often on the opposite sides of an issue. We don't always agree, but once the vote is cast, whichever way the council votes, that is the will of the council, and that's how we move forward. But when the Vice Mayor is acting on behalf of the mayor's office, the Vice Mayor is representing the mayor and not ourselves as an individual council member. So even though we may not always agree and we have different points of view, I have to represent his point of view when I am representing him. And we don't always agree. We've had several disagreements over the last few years, but when we go out and I am representing him, I represent his point of view as the Vice Mayor. So this is a position that I have taken very seriously. I appreciate all of the support from the citizens, from this council, and from the city staff. This is the last time that I will ever speak to you as your Vice Mayor, as this is my last year on the council, and I will no longer be the Vice Mayor. So thank you all, and we really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor Lane.
And with that, I would make a motion to select a new Vice Mayor to take my place, and I would nominate Councilmember Cameron Moses.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane. We have a second from Councilmember Dolan. Before we vote or take additional discussion, Councilmember Moses, are you willing to serve in that capacity?
Yeah, I'd be honored.
All right, excellent. Comments from members of the council?
I just want to comment on Dave's statement. Thank you, Dave. Having done that a few years myself over the years, it is a lot of work, and I do appreciate the time and effort. You go above and beyond, and it's noticed by our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, and we have a second from Councilmember Dolan. There's no additional discussion. We are ready to vote.
Motion carries six to one.
Thank you. All right, I think we've got our flow now. We've had some technical issues, so that's why we're kind of stumbling around here. I think we're all on and everything is working. So we'll move on to item seven, which is our Correspondence Communications Petitions Announcements and our City Manager Report. Starting with item 7.1 is announced vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. There are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, two regular members and two alternate members, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with one student member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at LHCaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is our City Manager's Report. Good evening, Mr. Knudsen.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'd like to start off this evening's report with something very, very special. We'd like to recognize and honor a very special hero and a good Samaritan in our community. This is a wonderful story. If Chief Polathus and Chief Sterling could come up front, we have a very special presentation.
Thank you, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, Council. This is a special moment for us. We are going to award a special person or persons for their good deed of a good Samaritan Award. So if I can please have Bliss, Michelle, Fiella come up with us. Linda, if you're able to come up, please. These are two individuals that is a true testament to the good Samaritans that we have in our city, and especially at such a young age, to basically help another individual in the time of need. So with that being said, I want to tell the story because the story was given to me by some fellow colleagues, captain, and a public education officer. And this one, when I read in my office, I felt that this was a special moment, that you need to be recognized, the both of you, for the acts of kindness that you presented to a fellow neighbor. And this is what I love about this city, is that we take care of each other, and we should be recognized, especially at this young of age. I appreciate this, and a gratitude to your parents for the way they raised you to help individuals. So on behalf of the police chief and myself, the mayor, the city council, really everybody, we're so proud of you. So on November 11, Bliss was out riding her bike like anybody else would on Veterans Day, especially having the day off from school, right? And she basically heard a voice calling for help. She then went home to see grandma, and the two of them walked back around the block until they heard a voice again. And then they figured out what house it came from. Bliss climbed over the fence to go to the backyard and get to the side garage where she found Patty. And Patty, if you could stand up, Patty is here. Patty was unfortunately on the ground for a couple days. And she was asking for help, and I kind of heard Patty did a lot of things to survive. And it's so important that you keep on calling for help because someone will eventually come and help you, just like Bliss and Linda did. So they called 911. The paramedics, the fire department, the police department came, rendered care, and was able to get Patty to the hospital where she's still recovering but making her way back, which a situation could have been worse. So again, so proud of you for your actions, Linda and Bliss, for what you did for our community. And we want to give you an award. It's a good Samaritan Award, and I want to present this to you, Bliss, and with a certificate.
Troy, if you appreciate it?
And this is a certificate, Bliss, for you and Linda, and here is an award of our good Samaritan Award, all right? And again, this is a testament to the actions that you and your grandma did to help someone else in the time of need, and we're so proud of you. And this is your moment, and keep on doing some great things because you're a special person. I also want to introduce Chase from our association, Gina Gutierrez from our public education, and then Chief Sterling has some, not Christmas gifts for you, just some tokens of our appreciation for you of what you did, okay? So Chase, if you want to present, Bliss?
This is on behalf of our local association and the Lake Havasu Firefighter Charities Organization. We'd like to present you with some gifts for your act of kindness within the community. There's a few tokens of our appreciation for what you've done for this nice lady in this community. So thank you. You're very welcome.
She? Microphone.
That was so awesome.
Looks like we're going to dinner.
And Bliss, this is from Public Education and the Fire Prevention Bureau. Thank you for what you did.
Bliss, you've got a lot to hang on to here. From the association and the police department, here's another goodie bag as well. Oh, I can't beat the Dalmatian. Really? Yeah, don't even open ours yet, okay? All right. Thank you very much, Bliss and Linda. You guys are much appreciated. Thank you for what you did. So not just yet. So if we can have Mayor, Council, if you can please come up, take a picture with us, family, please join us with this. This is a great moment. All right, thanks. So.
But that's okay. It's not connecting to the network.
What a wonderful story, and what a great time of the year to celebrate our citizens. Not only do we have the best citizens ever, but we also have the best employees ever.
Awesome.
So Mayor, we recently celebrated 50 employees this last week that are, combined, that are celebrating 555 years of service altogether. So everywhere, every year, Lake Havasu City, we recognize our five-year employees, our 10-year employees, 15, 20, and 25, and sometimes 30 and 35. So we had this opportunity to do that just very recently. Nearly half our employees are celebrating five years of service, some 10 and 15, and the other half are celebrating over 20 years of service. Pictured here are all of our five-year employees that have been with Lake Havasu City for five years and doing some really great work, where we have some amazing employees and we're very, very proud of them. With our 10-year employees are pictured here, who all provide excellent services to our residents and to the community. So thank you for what you do for our residents, for the community, and for your families and for your neighborhood. We had one employee that was pictured as our 15-year employee. This is Joshua Carter. He works for Parks and Recreation. We also had additional 15-year employees that were celebrated, unable to attend and be pictured, but special thank you to Scott Jacobs, Kevin Tiedemann from the Fire Department, and Rachel Kurth from Courts, and Nolan Smith and Derek Wilson from the Police Department. Thank you for 15 years of service with Lake Havasu City. Our 20-year employees we celebrated include Thomas Gray and Carla Doreta from the Police Department. We also had other employees not pictured that include, from our Police Department, including Bruce Yoast, Donald Gable, Mark Nickel, and Elizabeth Zuber from Public Works. Thank you for 20 years of service with Lake Havasu City. And pictured here is 25 years of service. These employees have been providing great service for Lake Havasu City for 25 years, including, we all know, Bill Young from Public Works, Jeanette Buckley from Transit, and Michael Ingram from Public Works, who are doing amazing work for Lake Havasu. Not pictured, but also celebrated is Kevin Shuck from the Fire Department and Everett Dewey from Public Works. We've had a lot of years of experience, knowledge, and influence and loyalty for us to be proud of. I'd like to thank our Employee Appreciation Committee, which represents all the departments across the city for coordinating this ceremony. And we obviously thank all of our employees for their service and dedication to their job. It's pretty obvious that we're surrounded by great people who work for the city, and I am one, am very, very grateful to be part of such a dedicated team. So thank you. On behalf of the mayor's office, Councilmember Jenny Koch, you presented a proclamation at the 21st Annual Christmas Tubas Day Celebration. And on behalf of the mayor's office, Councilmember Michelle Lynn, you attended an event honoring Native American veterans and their families. Mayor Shehe, you attended the Second Annual Hanukkah menorah lighting under the bridge and the 44th, well, 44 years, the 44th Annual Tree Lighting Ceremony at Wheeler Park. On behalf of the city, we'd like to thank the many volunteers and sponsors of this year's community dinner for another successful event. And it's a long list, but I'm going to identify each of our sponsors that helped make the community dinner such a wonderful event again this year. Those sponsors include Abundant Grace, Albertson's, Anderson Auto Group, Councilmember David Lane, Daybreakers Lions Club, Have a Pick, Havasu Youth Advisory Council, Kiwanis of Lake Havasu, Lake Havasu Rotary Club, Lake Havasu City Staff and City Council, Lake Havasu High School Associate Student Body, Lake Havasu High School Student Council, Lake Havasu Sunrise Rotary Club, the Lions Soccer Club, Lennon Bridge Rotary Club, Pastor Tony DeJong, Pepsi Beverages, the River Riders Motorcycle Club, including Paul Blazer and Kerry Porter. Like to thank Santa Claus. Shamak Foods for what you did for the event, Smith Food and Drug, Tower Foods, Unifirst, and of course, our chefs, including Chef Chris Kalaga, Chef Jennifer Yeomans, and Chef Thomas Fannergift. And we also had, as you learned earlier, we had about 70 Wave Culinary students that were part of the community dinner that helped with all aspects of it. So what a wonderful event again this year, thanks to the community coming together and hosting this dinner for the community. Lake Havasu City, in collaboration with the USS Arizona Relic Committee, led by the Marine Corps League Detachment 757, they held a heartfelt Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day Ceremony at Lennon Bridge Beach Park to commemorate the 82nd anniversary of Pearl Harbor Day and to unveil the proposed design of the memorial that will house the USS Arizona Relic permanently. The Marine Corps League Detachment 757 is raising funds for that permanent housing. It was a beautiful morning, made a beautiful ceremony for our veterans. If anybody's interested in learning more about the structure that's going to be built in Lennon Bridge Beach Park, or would like to consider a donation through the Marine Corps League Detachment 757, they can contact Brian Springberg, who is volunteering his time to make that happen. He can be reached at BrianSpringberg@yahoo.com. So that's B-R-I-A-N Springberg at yahoo.com. What another wonderful event again this year, thanks to Lake Havasu City Police Department and the annual Shop with a Cop event. This year, 24 officers and the Lake Havasu City Police Department alongside 30 volunteers welcomed 23 children for the annual program to allow each participant to purchase gifts for themselves and loved ones while interacting in a positive setting with our officers. The Shop with a Cop program is entirely funded through donations, and the Lake Havasu City Police Department remains committed to building lasting relationships with the youth in our community and through this partnership. We'd like to thank all the officers, the volunteers, the donors, the Fraternal Order of Police Associates, Lodge 47A, and the Lake Havasu City community for making this event once again a huge success year after year. Join us on Friday. This is a wonderful event that just really gets you into the mood and into the holiday spirit on Friday, December 15, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. This will be at the Tenell Memorial Skate Park over in Rorrie Park, and this is a free event for the community. There'll be snow on the ground, and there'll be sleds, and there'll be hot cocoa and cookies, and again, just a wonderful event. The community survey is now available for all residents who would like to voice their, provide their feedback, I should say, for the city or community and the city services. Any feedback that you are willing to provide is going to help us either to continue to provide great service or find areas where we need to improve. There is a website listed on the screen. If you go to that web address directly, you can fill out that survey online. There'd be another link that's available through the city's website as well. We ask that one response per person is accepted, and your response is confidential, and we don't share your information specifically, but obviously we will tally the data and use that to make some decisions moving forward. Now, this is in addition to about the 8,000 surveys that went out to households in Lake Havasu City over the last couple of weeks. The deadline for the online survey is December 26, and if you have any questions, please contact Anthony Kozlowski, the Assistant to the City Manager and Public Information Officer, and he can be reached at 854-4728. And lastly, a reminder that all city offices will be closed on Monday, December 25 for the Christmas holiday, and again, on Monday, January 1 for the New Year's Day holiday. Of course, police and fire services are not affected. They never are. Please check the Republic Services website for any interruptions that might occur for trash and recycling. All city offices will resume normal schedules on Tuesday, the 26th, for the Christmas holiday, and of course, on the January 2nd, following the New Year's Day holiday. This is the last council meeting of the year, so we will not be holding a council meeting on December 26 of this year, and the next scheduled meeting for the city council will be on January 9, 2024. So with that, Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Knudsen. All right, we'll move on to item eight, which is our public hearings. During the public hearings, there will be opportunity for public testimony during each of those hearings. We ask that you just come up to the podium, state your name for the record, and there is a light indicator box next to Ms. Williams. Green means you have time. Yellow means you have one minute remaining. Yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that your time is up to give your comments or feedback on that particular item. If you are here for one of those items, I do suggest that you talk during that process, because at the end of the meeting, we will have a call to the public where you also have an opportunity to speak to the council, but it will not be able to have a two-way conversation, so we can listen intently and get your feedback, but not be able to respond to that. And I'll go over that as we get a little bit closer. Also, we ask that when you are at the podium making comments, you are addressing the council, so just address the folks here at the dais, and we'll be listening intently to whatever feedback you may have. We'll start with item eight point one, which is a Series Six Bar Liquor License for Lighthouse Lounge, three-seventeen Lake Havasu Avenue South. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Christopher Beecham has applied for a Series Six Bar Liquor License for Lighthouse Lounge located three-seventeen Lake Havasu Avenue South. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series Six Liquor License. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also in attendance tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions for members of the council for Ms. Williams or for the applicant? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor?
Vice Mayor Moses? It'll take me a minute.
I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series Six Bar Liquor License for Lighthouse Lounge, three-seventeen Lake Havasu Avenue South.
Second. We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, and we have a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item eight point two is approve a cooperative purchase agreement with American Guard Services for armed and unarmed services utilizing an Arizona State Cooperative Agreement. Judge Kalali?
Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. So first of all, let me express my own personal gratitude and the gratitude of all those that work in the court for your support of the courthouse project. It has been amazing to see it come into fruition. It's a beautiful building, and I hope that all of you will get the opportunity to come and see that. This is kind of that last puzzle piece in all of that. This is a contract for services to provide security for the courthouse. It is a statewide contract, and so we get the benefit of being able to jump on the back of the rest of the state and get what I believe is a good price for those services. And so this contract comes to you for that purpose, to be able to provide that service to the citizens that come into the courthouse. The contract itself is one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. There is another nine thousand dollars in contingency funds for overtime. If for some reason a court hearing runs past five o'clock, or if there's other needs for security services after hours, that would be a contingency for that, but the contract itself is for one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars and some change.
Excellent. Thank you, Judge. Do any members of the council have any comments or questions for the judge?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Can you tell me if during council nights, if we'll have an armed guard?
I can't tell you that, because that's not the court that would do that. If you folks want to do that, it is built into what we're doing today. There is the possibility for funding for that, if that's something that needs to happen.
But this current funding doesn't cover that?
It does.
It does.
It does.
Yeah, so the contract includes all those elements, but it will only pay for the services that we use. So should a need arise for a community meeting to have security services, then that would be available to this. If the need doesn't arise, then it won't. But we'll know more as all of those pieces come together.
Okay, so just to clarify, so on the nights that we have council meetings, will we or will we not have an armed?
That hasn't been decided.
But we do have the funding for it. If that's what you folks decide, then we will have the funding to be able to provide that service through this contract.
And why are we deciding that as a council?
Right now, we're here where we're at. We're doing everything we've always done, but should, as we progress in transition into using that as a community room, if that is a need, and also, there's going to be some crossover potentially of the courts leaving as council or another community meeting may be coming in, and so there may be some overlap there as well. So we won't really know until we operationally are in there using the facility in its full capacity.
Okay, so maybe this isn't decided, but I just wanted to know that what security we're going to have as council members on a second floor of a building on council, and also for our guests that come in. I want to know what that looks like.
Sure, yeah. When we know that, we'll share that. Yeah, so right now, if we decide to have full security, then we have the money in this contract should it pass this evening, but that decision has not been made yet.
Mayor?
Councilmember Campbell?
In regards to her question, which is a great question, because I assumed by reading through it that we had eight hours on this contract is what it looked like, but my eight, what was it? How many hours? There was something in here in regards to that. Right now, we have our local police officers. Wouldn't that be the same as what we have now that always keep an eye on us as well?
Absolutely. At a minimum, what we do today is what we will continue to do going forward, but should there be a need of crossover, again, there's, it'd be a dual-purpose facility where the courts are operating and doing what they do, and then community meetings. So if we had a midday meeting for a work session, we're going to have overlap, and we're going to have to figure that out. We don't know what any of that looks like until we actually get in there. But again, should this contract pass this evening, there would be monies allocated in this contract for security services in addition to what we currently do, which is our local police department.
I understand what you're talking about at this point, and I would assume that we do have our own staff as well that can protect us as they have for years. That is what I'm hearing, I think, from you right now, moving forward. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor, motion?
Councilmember Lane?
Very good.
I move to approve the cooperative purchase agreement with an American Guard Services for Armed and Underarmed Services utilizing Arizona State Cooperative Contract and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with a termination date of October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and authorize city staff to exercise the option to renew for not to exceed maximum aggregate term of five years.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries six to one.
Mayor and Council, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Judge. All right, item eight point three is approve an amendment, Amendment Number Three to Professional Services Contract with Clifton Larson Allen for external auditing services. Ms. Ware?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is to increase our contract for audit services. We originally entered into a five-year contract with Clifton Larson Allen for years twenty-one, fiscal years twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-five for three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars. Thus far, we've had two amendments, and I just wanted to go through those amendments to see why we're at the Third Amendment. The First Amendment was to add a transit audit. We previously were not required to have this transit audit, but some of the federal funds that we're getting, now they're required to have one. So we added a transit audit for seventy-five, roughly seventy-five hundred dollars. And then our Second Amendment was for implementation of a new statement, a general accounting statement, standard eighty-seven, which was an extensive change for us. We have had two in the last couple of years. We've had GAZB eighty-seven and ninety-six, and essentially, what that's doing is, they're major changes, but essentially, what they're doing is taking off-balance-sheet financing to on-balance-sheet financing. So we had to review every lease from the lessor, lessy side, and value that and put that on our books, and then this year, we had to look at all software as a service, evaluate that, put that on our balance sheet. So these are major changes. The auditors, well, staff themselves spent hours and hours doing implementing new software, evaluating all leases, and when we do that, auditors have to review our processes, our analysis, and make sure that we record it properly. So now we're at Amendment Three. So Amendment Three is for the GAZB ninety-six, which is software as a service, the additional hours that they had to spend on that, and we are also putting in for future years, they have new standards that they have to audit for software, well, basically, IT security. So we're adding some additional dollars for that for the next two years. So we're at an increase of an additional fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars for a total contract price of three ninety-one, eight ninety-five. So we're at that, and then I also have to point out that I had two, we have two errors in the contract that we have attached to the agenda. One is a misspelled word revised, and the other is column four, year four. It doesn't total down correctly. It should be eighty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty. So I can answer any further questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ware. Are there questions for members of the council for Ms. Ware on this item? Yeah, so essentially, we've already approved the contract. There's an overage to the contract because of these amendments, and so we've met that threshold while you're in front of us again.
Yes. Amendment one and two hit the five percent threshold. Amendment three is putting us over. Yes.
Perfect. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item?
Hello, it's Bonnie Toy. I just have a really weird question. Are the audits online in a certain area at the website? I was just curious. And is that accessible for the public?
Yes, yes. So everything that we do is accessible to the public and available online, but you can get the audits, you can get our CAFR, and get all of our financial documents on the website.
Do you know where on the website someone would be able to find them?
Yeah, Ms. Ware will answer that question for you.
Thank you. So on our website, if you go in the finance area, there's the budget, our budget books, and then there's the ACFOR. It's called an ACFOR now, or... So within that big, huge report, there is the audit results in there. It's within the first ten pages, probably, so you could find it in there.
Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Please.
I move to approve Amendment Number Three to the Professional Services Contract with Clifton Larson Allen LLP for fifteen thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and authorize the city manager to sign the amendment.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item eight point four is our final public hearing, which is approve the cooperative purchase agreement for citywide uniforms, floor mats, towel rental, and laundry service with UniFirst Corporation. Mr. Young?
Morning, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mayor, City Manager. I work twenty-four-seven, so I get lost. I figured since this would be the last time I'd see you, till next year, I'd come and talk to you one more time, and by the way...
Bobby, I'm not buying a truck, all right?
I'm here to ask for your approval on a cooperative purchase through the state bid for UniFirst for not to exceed seventy-five thousand for the uniforms for Public Works, Parks and Rec, and towel service for the fire. This replaces all of our mats, shop tiles, uniforms, and all laundry service that goes along with that. Last year, we had about a hundred and fifteen employees. They serviced around two hundred towels for a fire, and I think the total came out for approximately just at seventy thousand. With that, I ask you to approve for not to exceed seventy-five thousand and available for the next three years if we so choose to go that route.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Young. Are there any questions for members of the council for Mr. Young? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any additional discussion or possible motion?
Mayor, motion?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
I move to approve the cooperative purchase agreement and annual expenditure not to exceed seventy-five thousand for citywide uniforms, floor mats, towel rental, and laundry services with UniFirst Corporation. Authorize the city manager to sign the agreement and authorize city staff to exercise the option to renew in accordance with the Arizona State Contract for three additional twelve-month terms through November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-eight.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Lane, a second from Councilmember Dolan. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, we'll now go to item nine, which is our call to the public. This is an opportunity that citizens have to address the City Council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. As I explained earlier, you just make your way to the dais, you state your name for the record. You would have three minutes. There still is the same light indicator box. Green means you have time. Yellow means one minute remaining. Red means that your three minutes is up. We again ask that you direct your comments directly to the City Council at the dais, and you don't have to sign up, but we did have folks sign up, so we'll start with those. We're actually going to start with the people that signed up first, and then we'll go to open. So we'll start with the Lake Havasu Leadership Twenty-Twenty-Four, if you would like to make your way to the podium.
Okay, hello. Welcome, Mayor and Council. We've also been meeting with Michael Keane, Director of Parks and Recs. Welcome. We're here in front of you guys. This is Two Thousand Twenty-Four Leadership Academy. We're going to be working in a project at the Rotary Park, two locations. We're going to have Mobi mats that we're putting in for two separate locations and one on the island by the flagpoles. And also, we're going to do swing set handicap assist right next to the area in the park by the skate park. Owner Rotary Park. So our goal is to try to fundraise about thirty-four thousand dollars. We went to First Fridays, and we made eleven hundred bucks on donations. Super excited. If you'd like to go to Lake Havasu City Chamber Foundation Leadership Two Thousand Twenty-Four, we'll have some information on there, and we're just getting started, so we just wanted to come and introduce ourselves. There's thirty-one of us all together, so you'll be seeing us around town fundraising and looking forward to talk to everybody, so. Anything else?
Looking forward to your support.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Lake Havasu. This will be the first time we'll have anything like that in our town, at any of our parks. I think one location in Parker has a Mobi mat, so we're going to have a couple extra, so thank you.
Yeah, great. Thank you. The next speaker is Susan Smith with Go Lake Havasu.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, Council. My name is Susan Smith, and I'm the new President and CEO for Go Lake Havasu. Delighted to have been selected for this position, and I just wanted to introduce myself, let you know my office is always open for questions, chats, coffee, regular, no sugar. Anything that you'd like to come by and chat with me. I'm also going to be setting up monthly informal meetings with the general public. I have my first board meeting tomorrow where we will determine our strategic efforts as we move forward. It's been a very busy week already, and I just wanted to say thank you. I think I might be your newest resident as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to Lake Havasu, and congratulations on the position. All right, that concludes the citizens that have signed up, so now we'll open it to anyone else that would like to address the board, or excuse me, the council?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm circulating some pictures, and I'm here to ask for some help. These are pictures of out front of our resort. I live at nineteen oh five Victoria Farms Road. I'm the President of the Property Owners Association for Havasu RV Resort. Over, close to two years ago, EBCOR took on a water extension project. This is what was there today when I took these pictures. You can see the front of our property. You can see the front of our property, the, the, the mounds of, the, the holes, the debris. We've been in contact with Epcore and getting nowhere. There, we don't have any idea for two years. I know that we have lost sales of our properties because of this. We're a five-star resort, and this is what they drive into. I'm asking for some help. I have to believe that they would, there's a permit process, they, Epcore can't just dig up the middle of a city road. I, I, I would think there would be a permit process or something that would allow the city to have some teeth in getting them to complete this project. A lot of you are business owners, you would raise heck if you had this going on in front of your, your properties or your business for two years. So I know you can't respond. I'm available for any help or any suggestions, and look forward to any help I can get.
Yeah, thank you. Also, just state your name for Ms. Williams.
Steve Mint, M-I-N-D-T.
Thank you. All right, would anyone else like to address the City Council during call to the public? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the call to the public. Item 10 is current events. Are there any current council committee reports?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Lane?
Yes, this afternoon, I attended a WACOG MCAC, which is our county board, and we discussed some of the usages of their grants, and one of the things that we can actually use here in Havasu, it's a program that supplies diapers, and so we're going to try to get the clothes closet to connect with WACOG and be able to participate in this type of program that can help families in need with diapers. Other than that, it was pretty end-of-the-year stuff, so not much to mention with that.
Very nice, yeah, thank you. Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor, I just left the chamber's governance board today, and I have a great announcement from Dr. Stone, where they will not be moving forward on a vote for a, what is it called? Override, thank you, thank you, Rick, I look, thank you. Yes, the override is not going to be moving forward for a vote. They've had a carryover in their budget, and they don't feel it's the right time to be coming out and asking for some money. They are doing a great job facilitating and managing their, their funding, and we're extremely proud of that, so I wanted to just do a public shout-out to them that we will not be in 2024 looking at an override. That is awesome. I will be heading to Yuma's MPO meeting on Thursday, followed by a state transportation board meeting in Yuma on Friday, and I wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and great joy. Kiss your babies.
Are there any other council committee reports? All right, item 11, our future meetings. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, January 9th, 2024. It's at 5:30 PM, and it is a regular meeting. It'll be here at this facility. Item 12, are there any future discussion items? Item 13, motion to adjourn? We are adjourned. Happy holidays, all. Thank you for being here, be kind, and we'll see you next time.